The States, next one is Camp Umeekus, next one is High Point Treatment, and the next one is Spruce Street. First of all, the minutes of the meeting held on October 24th. Any member see anything wrong with them? Any corrections, additions, whatever? If not, is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of October 24th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. The next one is the petition of Attorney Peter Freeman from Robert's Estates LLC, relative request to allow for the construction of 12 single-family dwellings pursuant to Mass. General Laws Chapter 40B. Subject property is located at 711 Plymouth Street, Middleborough, SS Map 44, Lot 2669, in the residence rural district. Declare the hearing open. We've had communication with the attorney and the owner. They want continuance until 12/12/13. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Dr. Braun?
In favor.
Mr. Diagley?
Aye.
Liz?
In favor.
Mr. Priestley?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. It was five to nothing in favor to continue it to that date. The next one is to hear the petition of... To hear the petition of Susan Akloa of 61 East Grove Street, Mass. 02346, relative her request to allow for an addition of one 16 by 24-foot cabin at Camp Umeekus with no plumbing. The subject property is located at 375 Wareham Street, Middleborough, SS Map 073, Lot 5813. Declare the hearing open. Somebody representing the YMSTU are.
Good evening. Yeah, we're here tonight to petition to add a new building at Camp Umeekus. Right now, it's located between two buildings that we currently have. I also have with me tonight Frank McDonald, who's a senior exec.
That's it.
That's it.
Any member of the board have any questions?
Didn't we approve a building for this camp recently?
Actually, two buildings, right?
We had...
How many buildings? Let's give him if this is approved.
This is not an additional one.
Oh, is it?
It's an additional... You can explain what happened.
Yeah. There's one that has been taken down and rebuilt. That was our boathouse. So that's been done. The other one, we just had to jack it up and just do a little bit of repair. But this is a new one.
Thank you. Anybody else want to be heard on this?
Hi, Frank McDonald, senior exec of Colony Y. Thanks for hearing our petition. Umeekus right down the road. And we're using, again, the cabin for shelter primarily during the day. It's kind of where the groups meet, different villages during the camp. And at the last meeting, we had approval. We sought approval to build two cabins. And there was a little confusion that evening. So, and as Sue said, we built one... We actually rebuilt one. That was an old bunkhouse slash boathouse. And the other one, and I think I may have mentioned this last meeting too, there was an older cabin from old ZFOS base that we salvaged after World War II. The camp's been there since 1922. And we were actually able to refurbish that. So it was simultaneous what was happening. There was a permit to jack that up. We salvaged that building. And so then, that was really the two permits that we used up, essentially, the two permits that we granted us that night. So we're back to ask to build a building that's setback in between the one that we refurbished and Hilltop Office, which is, has no plumbing, just electric. It's permanent shelter for inclement weather. We average about 425 children there a day. And again, we're just trying to give them shelter for daytime operations. And we do one overnight for two weeks. As you may know, we probably have about 1,500 individual children coming up there this summer. Last summer, we granted over 600 scholarships, which we make available to children in the area and actually come to camp and enjoy themselves.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Do you anticipate having any future building beyond this?
Yes. Actually, I've met with Bob Whalen. We went over a plot plan of the camp, you know, and I think down the road. We just received another gift from the Arbella Foundation. We were chosen out of 25 $50,000 gifts throughout the Northeast. And we're going to be able to refurbish three cabins that are in the back. We're not quite there yet. We've done the survey. We're doing the setbacks in regard to conservation. So the plan is to refurbish those three with that gift that we received from Arbella. Met with Bob about a month ago, looked at the plot plan in regard to what we're doing, what we need to do as far as the survey and the steps that we have to do.
So if I understood what you said, you're essentially rehabilitating existing structures rather than adding new structures in the future?
But in that future project, yes. We have three structures in the back that go back to, you know, they're all...
I understand. They need refurbishing. What I'm really interested in is, is there going to be additional units of any sort in the future?
Down the road, we would like to build a ball field and an additional basketball court. So that ball field might have a concession. I was talking to Bob about that, where we could possibly play concession slash units such as bathroom, where we could possibly place that. We're looking eventually to build a building that would house another component of the camp called Summer Fun Club, which is a day trip club. Because now kids have shelter under a framed tent. So, yes. So down the road, yes, we'd like to expand the number of buildings on the property well within the SEPTIC system. So we're looking at that as well.
Is the population of campers increasing?
No, it can't. It actually can't. Because we're essentially, the SEPTIC system that we have is designed for X amount of children on site, and so, no, we're not going to be exceeding...
That was the next question I was going to ask you.
Yeah. And then, you know, like I said, down the road here, we're looking to build a ball field. We don't have... We have like a multipurpose field that's out in the back we call Hidden Field. And we'd like to make a legitimate Little League ball field. Matter of fact, I just got an email from somebody from Middleborough Little League wondering about Umeekus and we have any plans to do, you know, something with baseball and down the road, could we collaborate together?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this cabin, what you say, up to 25 children?
No. No, this cabin, it probably houses about, oh, I don't know, maybe 10 to 15 children. A group. The groups are usually about 12 children. And this would accommodate about 25 children.
How far away is plumbing available to this structure?
Is plumbing available to it?
You said there's no plumbing in the building. But how far would the kids are going to have to go to...
Oh, actually, for that particular... There's a couple of bathrooms within access of 100 to 200 feet. There's one up the hill. There's one up the hill about 100 feet. And there's a large bath house. And then, to the right of that, is another bath house.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make? If not, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Should we read the letter from the building commissioner into the record first?
If you'd like to.
We have a letter dated November 6th. Dear Honorable Board, I've reviewed the petition submitted by Susan Okalita for Brockton YMCA relative to her request to allow for the addition of one 16-foot by 20-foot cabin at Camp Umeekus located at 375 Wareham Street. The cabin presented sleeps six, will have no plumbing, and have a screened-in porch. This cabin is to be used by the weekday campers only. The camp would actually be applying for a special permit of the Middleborough zoning bylaw under Section 3.3.2, non-conforming uses. I would approve this request respectfully submitted, Robert Whalen.
Thank you.
Could I interject for a second?
Go ahead.
Yeah. It actually sleeps more than... There would be 12 bunks in that. So the, like I said, the groups are about size of 12, a camper group. It's a 1 to 12 ratio, basically.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the petition of Susan Okalita, 61 East Grove Street, Middleborough, Mass. 02346, relative to her request to allow for the addition of one 16-by-24-foot cabin at Camp Umeekus. No plumbing in parenthesis, be approved. The subject property is located at 375 Wareham Street, Middleborough, SS Map 073, Lot 5813, with the understanding that this will be done for weekday campers only. And built in accordance with the plan as submitted this evening.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If it's weekday-only campers only, would that allow for overnight camping?
Not if you would... Not if the motion includes day camping only.
Is that your intent?
We have one overnight for the day campers. There's one overnight session.
I'm understanding that. But if we issue the permit the way it's stated now, we won't be allowed to do that.
Not use this cabin for overnight.
For overnight, correct.
You're okay with that?
Well, why are they... Once, we do four two-week sessions. And one night during those two-week sessions, they have overnight sessions. And we would like to have a building only in one.
That's my only objection was if you stipulate that, we won't...
I don't have any problem with amending my motion to include the fact that it allows for sleepovers on occasion.
One sleepover per session.
Okay.
That's fine. I just didn't want you to have a building you couldn't use.
That'll work.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, Dr. Braun?
In favor.
Mrs. Pulsifer?
In favor.
Mr. Diagley?
Aye.
Ms. Eggleston?
In favor.
And myself in favor. It's five to nothing in favor. You will get all the documentation, which will have to be filed, and you'll get a letter with it telling you what to do. Have no fear. Okay?
I don't remember. It wasn't that long ago.
I'd like to take these out of order, just so that... Because the item number five, which is the one for Spruce Street, will be continued... This is basically for the benefit of those in the audience. The 40B project on Spruce Street, at the request of the petitioner, will be continued to December 12th, 2013. Okay? Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Dr. Braun?
In favor.
Mrs. Pulsifer?
In favor.
Mr. Diagley?
Aye.
Ms. Eggleston?
In favor.
And myself in favor. It's five to nothing to continue it to that date. The only one remaining is Southeastern Regional Network High Point Treatment Center, which I'm not sitting on, but Mr. Priestley is, and the floor is his.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Mabar, President and CEO of High Point Treatment Center, Southeast Regional Network.
Can we just do one little bit of housekeeping beforehand? We first have to open the hearing up. So it's to hear the petition of Southeast Regional Network, who leased to High Point Treatment Center, Inc., to renovate the former St. Luke's Hospital for a 72-bed psychiatric hospital and outpatient clinic with 200 employees over three shifts. The grounds will maintain present parking, improve planting in a small gazebo. The subject property is located at 52 Oak Street, Middleborough, SS Map 50N and 50J and Lot 5216. So we can... It's a continuation of a hearing that began 8/8 or 8/15, one of the two. And so we'll consider the hearing open at this point. And just as a matter of housekeeping, before we even begin, the last hearing, we had a proposal that you accepted from RKG. And the scope was not in totality, I think, of what everybody had expected. That had then been revised. And just as a matter of record, I'd like you to accept the revised scope and the expense associated with it.
Yes, I accept the revised scope and the expense related to it.
Okay, thank you. So do you... What would you like to do tonight? Because we have a representative from RKG here tonight. And I'm not... Has the petition have been given a draft yet?
I remember we just emailed it to say happy about it.
Okay, great. So you'll notice I said "draft" because there's much more work that needs to be done. We have a preliminary, and we have a presentation, if you would like, to go over the framework, perhaps, and the approach and those things. And we also have Attorney Witten here. He may want to interject a thing or two. So again, I didn't mean to interrupt your introduction, but welcome again.
Thank you.
So how would you like to proceed?
It sounds like we probably should have your consultant start. Does that make sense?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, great.
Good evening. My name is Judy Barrett. I'm the Municipal Services Director with RKG Associates. We are a planning and economic development market analysis firm with offices in New Hampshire, Virginia, and Texas, and soon to be Massachusetts. And we were asked to review the fiscal and eventually the economic impact of the proposed High Point facility at 52 Oak Street. I want to tell you where we are with that, some kind of very initial conclusions that we've reached. I'm kind of glad in a way that I did not try to put an actual dollar value yet on the impact of the services, because around 3:30 this afternoon, we've received data from some additional communities that we've been waiting for for a couple of weeks. So I'll tell you a little bit about why we've received some information from other towns. But just to sort of, you know, set a backdrop here, my understanding of this project is that it is a proposed psychiatric hospital that would have licensure from the Department of Mental Health, the State Department of Mental Health, under three classes of licensure that DMH provides. I think the one that's, I keep hearing of interest here in town, is so-called Section 12, which is a provision of Mass. General Laws Chapter 123 that allows certain mental health professionals to determine that someone may be at risk of harm due to mental illness and in need of some inpatient care at least for three days for observation and assessment. And so that is what this facility would be for 72 beds. I think you're probably aware. If not, High Point is a well-known drug and alcohol treatment facility based in Plymouth. The Plymouth campus also has 16 so-called Section 12 beds that would be transferred to Middleborough. So your hospital would be entirely a Section 12 facility. My understanding is that it would not have a detox or the drug and alcohol unit that's based in Plymouth. And it's important to know that, because when we're trying to assess the impact of the project, we're going to try to find some hospitals that are more like what's being proposed here. You know, hospitals can vary tremendously in terms of the impact that they have on communities, depending upon the populations they serve. So part of what we've been trying to do is to look at some other communities in Massachusetts that have psychiatric hospitals, look at what the public safety impacts have been, because that's mainly what the impact involves, at least on the fiscal side, and see what their experience has been, and try to then estimate what the impact might be here. Then we can put a dollar kind of value on what that impact looks like. I think an important point about this study that I probably should just say right off the bat, I do a lot of this work, and one of the things I know about fiscal impact studies for units of local government is that property tax revenue means everything. Because our cities and towns are dependent primarily on property taxes to finance local government. So when you have a land use that generates no property tax revenue, it's almost impossible to say it's going to be a positive fiscal impact on your town. And that is, in part, the situation that you have here, in that you have an entity, which, as I understand it, will be tax exempt under General Laws Chapter 59, Section 5, from paying property taxes, and yet will also need some services from the community. So it's a little difficult for me to stand here and say, at any point, that it would be a positive fiscal impact, because you're not going to have offsetting revenue. I think the question then this creates for your community is, do you have the capacity with your existing complement of personnel and your, you know, police station, your fire stations and so forth? Do you have the capacity, what you have today, to service an institutional facility coming into your downtown area? Because you're not going to see property tax revenue coming from that facility to pay for additional police and fire fighters. You may have some other way of negotiating with High Point for additional revenue through something like a payment and lieu of taxes agreement. But just based on what you are statutorily eligible to receive, there won't be property tax revenue. So that's kind of just to start and to be kind of fair about what we're looking at. What we tried to do was reach out to the communities in Massachusetts, as I said, that have psychiatric hospitals. We received a list from the Department of Mental Health. I think I referred in the report, there's about 2,500 Section 12 beds in Massachusetts, or at least licensed capacity. Some hospitals are not using their entire licensed capacity, so the actual number of beds is probably a little bit lower. The vast majority of those beds are in facilities like that, which is proposed by High Point, i.e. a hospital devoted to psychiatric care. However, I think it's important to point out that more than half the actual facilities that have beds are private general hospitals, like where you go to the emergency room because you cut your hand or whatever. Many general hospitals have psychiatric beds as well. So the challenge for us as analysts was to try to find some facilities that were sort of similar. And ideally, perhaps even in communities that are similar to yours, that, I think, is even a bigger challenge, because, as you know, your town has a very large land area. And there aren't many communities in Massachusetts that are going to fit into all the categories of large land area, low population relative to land area, size of police department, size of fire department, and all the other kind of complements of your town that make up your land use pattern. So we just decided we would start contacting places that have hospitals. And let me tell you a little bit about where we are with that. If you go to Page 6 of this draft, what I've recorded to you here are the total number of beds in those facilities, and where we were able to get the data from the police and fire departments, what the calls looked like. And you're probably going to say right away, boy, the number of calls associated with High Point in Plymouth is quite a bit higher, and it is. But just bear in mind, as I said earlier, the facility in High Point has multiple programs. The facility in Plymouth, rather, has multiple programs, so it is a little bit different. But we certainly heard from the police and fire departments in Plymouth and Pocasset and Georgetown, yeah, we feel the impact. It's noticeable. And so we just tried to convert total call volume, as it was reported to us by the public safety officials in those communities, to number of beds, just a simple ratio. It's an easy way to make a comparison, and as the table one indicates, in Belmont, for example, which has a well-known psychiatric hospital, McLean, which I understand is going to be opening a facility here, the average number of police calls per bed there is .8, and the average fire calls is .4. In Plymouth, at High Point, it's 2.1 calls per bed at the High Point facility, and 3.3 calls per bed for fire. And then Pocasset is .6 and .6. So, and in Georgetown, we only were able to get data from the fire department, and that's 1.8 calls. Well, if we added up all the call information that we got and divided it by the number of beds in these facilities, it looks to us as though the impact here will be at least 126 police calls per year and probably 52 or more fire calls. And I'll tell you, I'm a little bit reluctant to hang my hat on those numbers tonight, because, as I said this afternoon, we've received data from three more communities that we were really eager to get information from, including Westwood and Pembroke, which have psychiatric facilities as well. So I'm going to be kind of updating these statistics, but I didn't put a dollar value on those, on that call volume yet, because I know those numbers are going to change based on the information that we receive. So here's sort of the take-home point. I can tell you what I, what we think the call volume will be to your public safety officials. I can put a dollar value estimate on that for you. What I can't tell you, because it needs to come from your town, is what do you think the tipping point is? And by that, I mean, at what point do you not have the capacity to respond to calls from this facility? I'm not... I wasn't hired to do an assessment of your police and fire capacity. I can only tell you you have X number of officers per thousand. And as you probably already know, I don't think it's going to be a surprise to anybody in this room, your police and fire staffing here is quite low, both on the basis of population and of land area. That doesn't mean you can't absorb additional calls. From my point of view, that's up to you. But I just want you to know comparatively, you're really quite low. You're low both in terms of communities in your region. You're low in terms of industry standards. So I think you need to think about how you're going to respond to a facility that is going to generate some call volume, you know, in your town. On the plus side, because it's a downtown location, where you've already got kind of concentrated police and fire activity, it makes it a little more efficient to respond to the facility. You know, on the downside, you're so understaffed that the more you're sort of diverting resources to one fairly small area of the town, I think the harder it becomes to sort of service the rest of the town. So I think those are the issues you're probably going to have to wrestle with. They're policy questions, which are, you know, your call, not mine. But I think my job is to try to give you the data and help frame what those policy questions should be, so that you can deliberate accordingly on this application. What we will be adding to the final report is both some additional data on the fiscal side, including putting a dollar value on what we think this impact looks like, but also kind of the economic impact of the project. And economic impact's a little bit different. Economic impact has to do with things like, how many jobs will the facility create? How many people will it employ? What sort of economic impact will there be of a facility in your town purchasing goods and services from other businesses here? Going down the street to buy paper clips? Going down the street to buy, you know, a hammer and nails or something like that? What will be the economic impact of additional spending by employees who would be working in the facility who are not here today? That's what economic impact means. It's different from fiscal. And I guess I would just like to point out that this is where a fiscal impact analysis for a town differs significantly from a state. The state is interested in income tax revenue, you know, so they're very interested in job creation and wages and so forth. And, you know, we are too. But that's because the state revenue sources are different. And I suspect from a state perspective, you know, any kind of employment generating facility probably looks good. The question for you folks as a town is, do you get revenue and benefits as well, given that your sources of revenue are different? So that's why we treat fiscal and economic impact differently, because the experience of it is different at the local level. So that's where I am with this. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments that you may have. Yes.
I just received this report this evening.
Yes.
What's the timeframe and which of these calls cover?
A year.
One year?
Yes. Sorry if I wasn't clear about that.
Can I ask you a question relative to the calls?
Yes, sir.
The police and fire, when Chief Gates had given us response, call responses for the High Point Plymouth facility.
Yep.
It broke it down into the type of call it was.
Yes.
And don't make me commit to this number, okay? But about 50% of the calls were ambulatory assistance, which, yeah. So.
Yes.
We don't talk about the nature of the calls as it relates to, you know, and I suppose in some respects, maybe it doesn't matter, but I think what we were talking about was at that time, types of things that can go wrong in a facility like this and the amount of police responses that it took when in fact, really, the numbers were a little skewed only because half the numbers were for ambulances, not anything to do with crime or criminal activity or things of that nature. So were you able to break these numbers out into the types of calls?
I would be happy to do that in the revised version of this report. I do have the data from Plymouth. We actually got data independently. We went to Plymouth and got the information. And of the 223 police calls on here, 143 are ambulance-related.
Which is, that's a remarkable number. Now, I'd love for somebody to define what is ambulance-related, meaning what does that entail?
Okay, well, there's two types of ambulance response. One is non-emergency transport and the other is emergency transport. And my understanding is that High Point is discussing with, I don't want to speak for you, but with Brewster, ambulance providing a separate contract with Brewster to handle non-emergency transport. Non-emergency transport is going from one facility to another without an emergency basis for that need. Emergency transport is somebody calls 911 and there is an actual medical emergency and people need to be transported by ambulance. It's two different things.
But do police respond in both cases to those?
Police, yes.
In both instances?
My understanding is yes.
Simple ambulatory transport and...
Well, see, the thing is, if you get a call for the 911 and it's a non-emergency, you don't know until you get there.
So is it safe to assume that the 222 calls, regardless, was an office's dedicated time?
Yes.
To that facility?
Yes. Yes, a police officer responded. I mean, these are both emergency and non-emergency calls. This is, you know what the data represent? They represent somebody dialed 911.
Right, okay.
That's what this is about. And so, but, you know, once a police officer gets to a site or fire department that provides ambulance service, you know, if determination is made that it's non-emergency transport, then, you know, you can handle it in a different way. So I think the point is simply that it may help to have a separate contract for non-emergency transport. My experience, however, not so much with this type of facility, but really with assisted living, is that sometimes people just call 911 anyway. And what we heard informally from some of these police departments is, that often happens. And I think it's happened probably to the folks at High Point and Plymouth as well because their sense of what they've called for is very different from the calls the police department records. I would also just point out that some of the data, some of the call data on this report from Plymouth, in our opinion, probably is not related to High Point, but may very well just be related to the address. And the classic example is a motor vehicle citation, may or may not be High Point-related. So you have to be a little bit careful. When we call asking a police department for data, they're going to look it up by address. And so anything that's tied to that address ends up being dumped into a report like this. In our opinion, most of the calls here can logically be tied to some activity at High Point, but there are a few that were not and we took them out. And I would do that, you know, probably with any other department's data that we got. It's just, I would just make the point that if someone inside the facility calls 911, the police and fire department have to respond. And, you know, the length of the call is important, too. It's what we heard from the departments we've heard from so far outside of Middleborough is the fire department providing, mind you, most of these fire departments are providing ambulance service. It's a little bit different from what you have here, but their experience is about 90 minutes a call and the police calls are 25 to 30 minutes each.
Can you make sure that that gets noted in your report, please? And would you also note the fire response, which is ambulatory only for, you know, rescue? Because that's interesting as well.
Yep, I will do that.
The other question I had before I opened up to the rest of the board was the, one of the concerns was the McLean Hospital that was approved that's going in and the impact of a second facility in such close proximity to that facility. Will you have an opinion?
We will have an opinion. We've had a bit of difficulty getting data from McLean's and it may be that we just haven't reached the right person yet. Yeah, we have an opinion. They're different facilities, as I think you probably know, but you also have, I think, a different situation in that my understanding, which I have yet to verify, is that McLean is leasing the facility that they're going to be in, so I believe you're still going to see tax revenue coming from that. I need to verify that with the assessor, but that's my understanding. So right off the bat, again, you've got this difference of there's revenue coming in and that doesn't mean that they're paying for their service costs, but it could mitigate the impact in a different way.
Any other questions from any of the board members?
I think it's a real challenge to be in a situation like your town. You know, you're a growing community, you have a lot of land, you're not poor, but you're not wealthy. And it seems as though institutional types of uses are probably going to be very interested in being here, just because you have a growing community in southeastern Massachusetts and it's a non-urban area. You know, if there are opportunities that come up in a community like yours, I think a lot of institutional uses might be, you know, interested in being here. So I think managing that while you continue to grow in other ways will kind of be a challenge for you. And I'm saying that as a planner, but...
But I think what's interesting for us as a town is I think everybody really sees the need for a facility like this based upon today's society.
Right.
Unfortunately. And at the same time, we have this albatross sitting up there.
Yeah.
Vacant, and there was a hospital. And, you know, there's two schools of thought. There's many people don't want a facility like this in downtown Middleborough. And yet at the same time, there's been a number of several attempts to get that facility repurposed into something else, which continuously fall through.
Right.
And I know, at least from my perspective, all I want is my eyes wide open. That's all I want.
Yeah.
And so I think we can talk through a number of the issues, what's right, what's wrong, what's best for the community. Certainly, our services, police and fire should have a large say. And they should have a presence in terms of what we're capable of and what we're incapable of. It would serve no purpose if we were to put something like this in at the expense of something else. So, and I think the petitioner understands that and I think the board, because I don't think we've ever had a petition before us, you know, that has such long, long-term ramifications, you know? I mean, we need to make sure that this is right for the town 50 years from now. So, and maybe even longer than that. I won't be around to worry about it.
I find myself saying that a lot lately, too, sir.
But, anyway. So are there any, I mean, I know this is a preliminary draft and this is excellent. This is exactly, I think, what we were looking for as a board, directionally, anyway.
I do think one, your point about the location of this site, I think, really makes it very challenging for us as analysts because all these hospitals that we're looking at, they're not in downtown locations. They tend to not be, you know, and High Point and Plymouth is not in a downtown location. So, you know, that really does, it creates both an opportunity and a constraint, I think. And the opportunity is what I referred to earlier about the ability to be efficient because you've already got concentrated activity in an area, but, you know, the more you're in one area, you can't serve this great big town. So I'm not sure that's, it's that much of an advantage, but, you know, the economic impact, I think, is probably going to be a mixed bag, too. You'll have, you'll have income in the downtown area that you don't have because you've got employees at the facility and they'll spend some money here. On the other hand, you know, people have perceptions of facilities like this that could be an economic detriment as well. I was the community development director in Plymouth many, many years ago and I remember having these conversations so vividly when we had some social service agencies in the downtown area. So I understand where you're coming from.
Well, it's interesting for me personally because I've lived here ever since I was married in 1981. And to me, downtown ended at Eggers. For an extra shot, that is not downtown to me. That's just me, right? And so Central Congregational is the other one, you know, here across the street.
Yep, yep.
That, and then the police station going the other way. So that's the crossway, that's downtown.
You know, it's so interesting to hear you say that because when I worked on this report, I thought, I wonder how you guys think of your downtown?
Yeah.
I'm pretty good at sort of focusing in on roads and figuring out what things are...
No, just be careful. That's Eric Priestley's downtown.
Okay, okay. I will not ask this question.
Don't say "you guys." That's plural. I'm just me. I'm just me. But seriously, I mean, that's, it's funny that we, you know, and I get the reason for it, but whatever. Welcome to my world.
That's fine.
Norman?
You mentioned that we have a large land area here in this town. I don't know if you are not aware that 46% of that land is landland and non-buildable.
I didn't know that, but I'm not surprised. I mean, just looking at aerial photos of the town. It's not necessarily, you know, pristine enough. I don't think all of it's going to get developed, but nonetheless, it's a big town. It's still, even if it's wet, you've still got areas that need to be serviced that are, you know, well outside the downtown area. So as I said, I think these are issues that you folks are going to need to grapple with. All I can do is sort of provide you with an estimate of what we think that impact's going to look like, both in terms of numbers of responses and the dollar value of that, and you have to decide what can you absorb.
So we have the tough job.
You have the tough job. I have the analytical job.
And you're getting the money.
I have, my job is to give you information so that when you make a decision...
And we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anybody, well, do you have anything in response to that that you'd like to share?
You don't mind?
No, please, by all means, go right ahead.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Thank you. From the August meeting, I actually did a review of the police logs, which I liked to spend a few minutes on because it actually ties into the RKG report handed out tonight. And certainly I'll take a look at the full report when it's available and also the calls because I, you know, looking at what was presented tonight, I do think there might be some duplication that maybe we could get clarification from both police and fire in Plymouth. But I did use the police chief of Middleborough's report because he did a great job getting all the analysis. So I took that information and I put it into an Excel spreadsheet, which allowed me to kind of group it better. Didn't change any data. It's all the same numbers, it all ties back to his report. And I'd like to, I have enough copies for the whole board.
Sure, by all means.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
What I did is I did multiple years, I did all the data that the last three years I gave that was available.
Thank you.
I know today we were referring to the 2012 data, which is on page two, and it just happened that one of the things, I did actually meet with the police chief of the town of Plymouth after the meeting so I could understand the report better myself because it was not a report that I quite frankly never looked at before. And for tonight, one of the big things I want to point out in fiscal year 2012, you know, from the 911 call report that was presented at the August meeting, there was 207 calls. And out of those 207 calls, 116 of those calls were transferred for ambulance, three were abandoned, nine were accidental 911 calls. And the last one, I just happened to pull out into this column, is how often the police department actually responded with an ambulance and they only responded on 12 of those 116 calls. It just happened, I was going to present this at the last meeting, but the decision was made to do the economic analysis first. So I did that data for all 2013, 2011, and 2012, just so you have a better idea that... And I, you know, again, talking with the police chief in Plymouth about it, a lot of the ambulance 911 type of calls, they don't feel they're of a nature that you would need a police officer involved in. Because they certainly felt like someone got injured by another party, the police would have a great interest in that versus someone's having chest pain and you want to transport them to a hospital. So the number was quite low for police responses with ambulance. And again, you can go back and pull the data presented at the August meeting by the police chief in Middleborough and you will find all my data ties directly into their data.
So may I ask you a question, please? Go to your FY 2012?
Yes.
The 56% of 116?
Yes.
Did a police officer drive to the High Point facility in Plymouth?
My understanding, and I certainly have no problem double checking the police chief, my understanding is when the police officer came to the facility, they booked it separately under police with ambulance, and that's a category that was in the report.
So the 911 call, is that for ambulance only, the 56% or 116?
No, when you make a, and again, this is a conversation I had with the police chief and he kind of educated me on it because I really was not familiar with how a 911 works. The way it was explained to me, when a 911 call comes into Plymouth, and it may be different in Middleborough, I'm not familiar with how your system works, that they make a decision, should they send a police car with an ambulance or not? And based upon the type of 911 ambulance call it is, they make the decision. And you can see, in the case of our facility, they normally decide not to send a police car. But certainly, in fact, it might make sense if RKG, quite frankly, as an independent party, maybe followed that conversation versus, you know...
Right, well, because my concern is, if you had 116 ambulance transfer ambulance calls, of which only 12 involved the police officer, then we're grossly overstating the number in terms of the police response.
I agree, and I would request RKG to go back and talk with the police chief and certainly, this is the 911 report that was presented to me at this meeting in August, and I certainly would appreciate, just to make sure that we're looking at the right data. So thank you.
Yeah, because that would absolutely skew your dollar cost per visit if you...
It would, yes, it would. So I think the data is very important and I agree totally that you have a tough job. I also certainly do not feel that you should pay for the service calls to my facility. At the last meeting, you know, there was a little bit of conversation around pilot payment in lieu of taxes as a taxes-deferred organization. We really do feel that we want to be a partner of the town, partner with public safety. Certainly, quick glance through this report, you need more support to support us, we are not arguing with that. And to me, it's more of a matter of figuring out, okay, if we're going to use some of your town's resources, it's a reasonable thing that you come back to me and say, you know, these are the resources you're going to use for public safety and here's what we're thinking it's going to cost to do that. And I quite frankly don't have a problem with that and I look forward to the rest of the analysis.
Thank you.
I do know from the last meeting, we had a number of agenda items. I don't know if we would have time. I was hoping to have some time to talk about a few of those tonight.
What are they?
Again, reading the minutes of the meeting, I marked a few different items and...
Can you just give me the categories of what they are? And the only reason I'm saying so is because, quite frankly, unless we make it by step one, meaning figuring out the whole impact, the analysis, the, you know, the economic impact analysis, all those things, we don't have to worry about parking, we're not going to have to worry about a number of different things. And I know a lot of the things that you've already agreed to, like the security on-site for the first year and so on. for the first year, and so on and so forth. So, what I want to try to eliminate is redundancies, okay? So, if you're giving us something new, I would obviously entertain you doing that. But I just, we're going to continue this until, excuse me, December anyway, so, but by all means, I certainly don't want to...
Yeah, my, my concern, and why, why I was making the request is, because I, I do feel that a number of issues outstanding, and I honestly think that RKG will be able to do the requested analysis and come back with that information. But, you know, certainly, the, the parking, to me, seems like a very gray area as far as what the intention of the board is on parking. To me, the drainage seems pretty cut and dry. I mean, I think we have a great plan and much improved drainage from what you're experiencing off the property today. And of course, the other issue was just about the location itself, which I don't know. That was a big question, is it, is it a good location, and maybe, you know, it was part of the RKG analysis. My, my concern, of course, is, it's coming back in December, how much we get accomplished, because, you know, the, trying to figure out how to finance this property, from my perspective, was very difficult. And, you know, trying to put together the dollars to develop the property ended up being a blend of using taxes that, bonds, and new market tax credits. And, and new market tax credits are very difficult to receive, and they're rewarded on the merits of a project. And certainly, I did a number of presentations to a number of different investment groups around the project here in Middleborough, in need for these services in Middleborough. And I was very pleased to be rewarded a large number of tax credits. And the tax credit investors do have the right at the project, but don't feel the project's going to happen in a fair amount of time to remove the tax credits from the project. And because of the, the high cost of redeveloping that property, it's been sitting empty for a decade, there's a, a very large investment, over $10 million, to bring the property back online. And the revenues that the property would have to support the debt on the property really didn't line up, and the tax credit really is what made it possible to do. And so, my, the reason for my request tonight, to try to see there any other major roadblocks, is really to have some level that our list is manageable, so to speak, in future meetings. So, and to me, probably the biggest issue to me is probably around the parking, because there seems to be a, a large difference between what we, what our proposed parking was and using the maximum parking allowance that's available to the board, noting that there is actually, there is no light, there's no zoning bylaw that, that clearly identifies parking for a hospital or, or anything close to a hospital, where in other communities, they have, you know, they stub that out as a standard. So, that was the purpose of my request, particularly around parking. And I feel I could add more parking to the site if it pleased the board. I honestly think that I don't need more parking, and I prefer to keep as much green space for trees, flowers, and grass. But certainly, there is additional land that could be used for that purpose, but I just don't think it's needed, and I don't think it'd be a good use to take away more green space, quite frankly.
Thank you. I don't, I don't want to talk about parking.
Okay, thank you.
Now, and I also want to just be very straight with you.
Sure.
In terms of what are your priority? Tax credits, finance structure, lending, borrowing, building, 10 million, 12 million, is the least of my concern. And, and I know you appreciate that, and I'm not saying it in a condescending manner. I'm saying that our first priority as a board is the town.
Yes.
The impact of the town, the townspeople, and all of that. So, I understand that you have maybe a timeline that you're working on with your investment group, and we will do, we'll work diligently, as we always do, in trying to bring this to a completion.
I appreciate it.
And I just, I want you to know that what our priority is, is not going to line up with yours necessarily, just as you just explained.
No, I just appreciate you being in kind of sense and, and working, working on it. That's still the way we can, thank you.
Got it. Anything else? Would anyone from the audience like to speak? You just have to come up to the podium, if you would, give your name and address.
Steve Spethow, 24 School Street, Middleborough, Massachusetts, downtown resident. If I could perhaps, as well, for consideration that you work with your consultant. Right here. Thank you. I'd like to throw, if I may, it would only take a minute, if you want one, I've got about five or six extra. It's no secret I'm a downtown resident. So, my interest was in what's High Point's impact on the personal wealth of Middleborough residential property owners. There is a publication, as sourced here, The State of Working America, 12th edition. The people that wrote that is the Economic Policy Institute, published by Cornell University Press, November of last year. And it said that sixty-four percent of people's equity or personal wealth is their home. Thirty-five point five percent is everything else. So, I reached out to real estate professionals that are in Middleborough and asked them what would be the impact of the High Point facility, as it was explained last week, a couple of weeks ago, to the residents. And the consensus of the people that responded was that it would devalue residential property by 10% within a quarter-mile radius. Now, I got people, nobody was less than 10%, it went as high as 15%. Some people said, if I can see it, it has an impact. There was another group of people that said a half a mile radius. So, I checked with one of the bankers, and they thought that 10% in a quarter-mile radius devaluation was more than fair to the side of High Point. So, I checked to see what the residential property values were within a quarter-mile of downtown. Commercial, there might be some businesses that benefit, because people buy groceries or gas, and there might be another business that says it might have an impact on foot traffic. So, I took commercial out, just residential. It's $187.5 million, and 10% of that would be $18,750,000, that the residents within a quarter of a mile would no longer have in their home. So, if somebody went to sell their home, what they could get for it would be 10% less than what it's assessed at now. And as you're making a decision about services, I also think there's an impact to the people. That's a pretty healthy contribution that they would take as individuals to have this facility come into town. If we didn't have anything, if we weren't doing our fair share, and then that's something for you folks also to think about, are we doing our fair share? We've clearly got things that are outside of your control, sober houses, halfway homes, we have a homeless shelter, we will already have a facility like McLean. So, the question also beyond the financial impact is, how many of these do we need to have to, do we become the community that houses, that takes on the burden for everybody around us? Clearly, Bridgewater's got the state prison, they've got a big burden on this. But when we look at the towns around us, do they have any facilities that are sharing the load along with Middleborough? So, this is just one aspect. I didn't hear it mentioned in the study at all. You know, if you're not selling your home, if you're not a retiree, probably no impact until you do. But if you're somebody that's saying, well, I might move to Florida, I might want to move in with my children, and now my house is not worth $350,000, it's worth $325,000 if somebody would pay me, that's real hot cash out of your pocket. So, I'd ask for something like that to be included. Now, I polled as many people as I could get a hold of, and I did get a sampling. I'm not asking you to take my word for it, clearly the consultant could look out and, and do that. With the property, clearly blighted in its present state, something that we dealt when I was on the Board of Selectment. But it has the potential of being something more positive, if somebody would redevelop it. And if you folks had agreed at one point in time that it could be affordable housing. So, it has had people that have looked at it for other uses. You know, that's all future, right? This is the proposal that you have in front of you. And so, again, the only thing I'm asking you to take a look at is, what is the hot negative financial impact on people surrounding the facility? Thank you for your time.
Neil Rosenthal, 78 Cedar Street, Middleborough. That building has been looked at for every possible use there is. Obviously, as a member of several building committees, I was part of analyzing the structure of that building and what reuse could be. And what we figured at, at the time when Mary O'Donnell was being encouraged to try and deal with the town so the town could acquire that for a potential future site for the police station, at the time when we thought that was necessary, we no longer are interested in that site for that purpose. We determined that building would have to come down. There really is very, very little, if any, realistic reuse for that structure, other than as a hospital. Now, part of it is, it's built like, it's a concrete bunker, it's built like a fortress, and it's got seven-foot ceiling height, which makes it extremely difficult. You have to bore through all the concrete to do anything. The notion that someone's going to come along and turn that into affordable housing is, is probably not a realistic notion. In fact, Mrs. O'Donnell, who did have a permit from this board to do 40B housing there, abandoned the idea, because it simply wouldn't have been cost-effective. Now, that place has been empty for years. For several years, we would have given anything to get any kind of hospital back there. And of course, we, we failed in that attempt. In fact, for a while, we had some kind of a so-called emergency walk-in center, and that closed up. But at, at that point in time, the notion of having a hospital would have been very welcome in this community. Now, a real hospital with an emergency room and all the things that brings would be far more problematic than what we're talking about here. So, I'm, as you might sense, I'm in favor of this project. I'm sick of looking at that relic standing there, and I know that if we don't do anything 10 years or 15 years from now, we're going to bulldoze that thing, or somebody is. And there's going to be a big cost associated with that, and you want to know what the cost of, the effect on abiding realty is. Well, that's got a terrible negative effect on abiding realty. Now, imagine that facility up and running and, and back where it ought to be. I mean, that's, can't do anything but be positive. So, all of these notions of how it's going to affect the price of a house, I find frankly that living next to a dump doesn't particularly affect the value of the house. And the people are always saying, oh, my house won't be worth half of what it is. But then if you go and offer them half, they won't sell it to you, because I've done it. I've offered them half. The other thing is, is that when you talk about police and fire services in this town, we have a totally inadequate fire service for medical emergencies in the town of Middleborough currently. The average response time in much of the town is over 10 minutes. That would be better if we could staff the North Middleborough Fire Station, but it still wouldn't deal with East Middleborough, which is as much as 12 minutes. It depends where you're coming from, but, but certainly, just running out of central station is totally inadequate, and largely, that's what the fire folks do now, is that they respond to medical emergencies. Now, at one point, several years ago, we had the opportunity to get a relatively large grant from the feds, enough to, in fact, hire firefighters and staff that North Middleborough Station for several years. But we didn't accept it, because those in, on the Board of Selectment couldn't see, you know, how we could continue to fund that. Well, one way you fund that is through private transports, private ambulance transports. And so, potentially, you have a facility that uses a lot of these transports, or you have two or three of them, that might be enough to actually fund the expansion of our fire department to where it really needs to be in order to currently serve, to serve the current residents of this community, never mind the future residents of this community. So, it's, it's a difficult situation because of the current inadequacy, and everybody knows that the fire department is inadequate. So, growth could actually help, not, not hurt. I mean, there's, when you've got a town as large as Middleborough, with a potential for build-out to a minimum of 55,000 homes, even with all the limitations of the land, there's got to be economic activity to, to make it all, all work. And this, this kind of facility, you know, in, in, in the downtown Middleborough would certainly help the downtown economically. There's no question that having 200 people at, at a facility, you know, would benefit lots of businesses in, in the town, potentially. So, again, I, I think that in the economic study, that you ought to discuss with the fire chief, what the potential would be for private transport, and how that might ultimately lend itself to the town fundamentally having its own ambulance service. And then what we'd be talking about is these folks contracting with the town for ambulance service, rather than with a private, a private person. So, again, I'm, I'm very much for this. I think that there are, there are obviously people who are afraid of this, for whatever reason. Just remember this, when you're looking at this facility, these folks own that facility. They are going to make a 50-year investment here. McLean Hospital, they're going to lease their facility. You have no idea how long that's going to be there, or how long, how that's going to work out. So, I certainly wouldn't assume that McLean is making a 100-year investment in the town of Middleborough. But these people definitely want to come here, they're willing to spend substantial money, and I think that this is a very important decision you're going to make. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Neil just reminded me of that. I appreciate what Neil said. I didn't take my reaction to it. I did reach out to people whose livelihood is made on assessing property values, selling them to people, getting other people to come to our community. Again, I'm just asking you to reach out to the professionals on it. The other thing is, let's say that it only had a 2% negative impact. So, that means the people around here's assessment goes down. Well, town government never gets less tax revenue, they always get 2.5% more, because that's what the state requires. So, they reassess the town, downtown loses value, the pie gets split, everybody else gets a little increase in their assessment, and then we put 2.5 on it. So, I think everybody in town, whether you're downtown or not, will be making an investment in the decision of, following whatever decision that you folks make. And if it's a positive one, there will be money coming out of their pocket. Thank you again.
My name is Mark Edwards. I live at 81 Pearl Street here in Middleborough. I am in a butter in the general area that's determined or been discussed in this, and I feel that it would be a detriment to our neighborhood, and I don't think it would be any additional, I don't think it would add to my property value. I'm not so sure it'll lose it, but my property value's gone down in the last five years, just like everyone else's, and this, I don't think is going to help it at all, and I'm here to speak in, in opposition to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one comment I'd like to add with this, while this was being presented to us. Bridgewater has a large inmate population. The state reimburses the town for every inmate that is housed there.
Thank you, Liz.
I just want to make one comment about real estate values and development. It just happens that the facility in Plymouth was built in 1986 and opened in January 1987 in an area of significant growth. And in that quarter-mile radius that was discussed earlier, many developers have built hundreds of houses that sold for extremely good money, and it happens that your consultant actually used to work for economic development for Plymouth. So, I, I do think you have some good information and data available to you, that there's been a lot of decisions made, made to build a lot of extremely nice houses within a quarter of a mile of our current facility. Thank you. Thank you.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve McKinnon. I live at 867 Plymouth Street, Middleborough. I'm also chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I'm speaking for myself. The two major concerns I, I'm speaking for myself but also as a selectman because I wear both hats. Two major concerns I have with this facility, I mean, I like the idea of having a facility there. Certainly, it's pretty tough to bring anybody downtown and say, geez, come on, we want you to move in down here. And say, what the hell is that? Don't worry about that. So yeah, it would be nicer to have a facility completed in there and operational. My concern with this particular type of facility, being a nonprofit, they're not going to pay taxes. Of course, as a selectman, we're going to have services. The debates can go on for hours about, is it going to be 50 ambulance call, is it going to be, are we going to have to send engine one over there 400 times a year, one time a year, three times a year? Are we going to need two police cars, six police cars, how many police cars? Who knows? We won't know for a year after it's open. Then we'll have a better baseline. But the taxpayers are going to have to pay for those police cars and those fire trucks that are going to be going there. And when they're going there, they're not going to go out to Pine Street. Or if the apparatus is at Pine Street or at Oak Point, it's got to come from Oak Point down to here. So, you know, we're going to have service demands. So selfishly, as a selectman, as a taxpayer, I want to see a significant payment in lieu of taxes for this. Now, the other piece of this is the type of facility it is. It's going to be a lockdown facility for Section 12 people who are Section 12, should I say. One of the things I heard was it's a, they'll be brought there probably by some type of transport, ambulance, whatever, and admitted, treated, and then once they're finished treatment, they'll be released. The concern I have is the release piece. I, because of the service area that was also discussed, which is Route 95 to Route 128, everything out to Providence. So that's the service area for this particular facility, as I was heard in one of our previous meetings. That's a big area. I don't want to be the recipient of people who are having emotional difficulties from all the major towns and cities around that area, and then they get sent down here, and there's no vehicle or no methodology of getting them back to where they came from. And my understanding is with McLean's Hospital, they get brought in, they'll be treated, assisted, and then when they're finished with their treatment program, they are taken back to where they came. And that is what I would like to see with this facility. If you come from a town, a city, Attleboro, Brockton, Weymouth, whatever, after your treatment is done, you are taken back there. Not, oh, Joey's coming to pick me up, so I'll meet him outside in five minutes. No, no. Transported back to the hospital he came from with a chain of custody type of thing. Naturally, you're getting signed in down this hospital. You're taking him back up to the emergency room at whatever hospital he came from, and he gets signed in up there. So that, as a taxpayer, yeah, it's one of the, I'm not one of the residents who live in that area, but it would certainly take some of the angst, I would think, out of this, if there's a chain of custody of, and I hate to use that term, but want to make sure that there's a way of making sure that people go back to where they came from. So those are my two biggest concerns with this. I like the idea of having the place being built up. I don't like the idea of it being a nonprofit, that we can't tax it. But if we get a payment in lieu of taxes, I can deal with that. I think the folks could deal with that. And I think the folks can deal with if there's a, you know, making sure there's a, the people are taken back to from where they came. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Eric.
Maybe you have the applicant respond to release policies. I'm not sure.
Discharge planning is extremely important, and certainly transportation out of the facility is very important also. So we do provide transportation for folks that are discharged from the facility. We have no expectation that folks are going to hang out front or wander downtown and kind of take up residence in your downtown area. And again, it's, I think it's another thing that your consultant could discuss with the police chief since they're probably talking anyway. So we want folks to do well when they leave the hospital. And the reality is a large number of families meet their family member at the hospital, and folks who don't have family, to take them back home, we provide that transportation. Anyone else? We actually have a letter that I'd like, does somebody want to read it into the record for me? It's on the back of your, Norman, you do it. One letter that was received, an individual that could not be with us here tonight, so.
On November 7th, 2013, zoning board of appeal. Dear Mr. Chairman, my name is Linda Trotterman, and I live at 57 Oak Street in Middleborough, Mass. I am writing to you to address my concerns over the proposal of High Point opening a mental health and drug rehab center into the former St. Wolf's Hospital. A mental health and drug rehabilitation center does not belong in the center of town. I realize that there is a great need for this type of facility, and I am not against the purpose of this, but the location. It's just not the place for it. Have any of your board members been near this area when the food pantry is going on, or when the boy scouts are holding their meetings, or when they are holding NA-AA meetings, or when CCD classes are being held? The traffic is horrendous. The food pantry is very well organized, but sometimes there is up to 50 cars in and around the area. Someone was blocking my neighbor's driveway last week, and after some discussion, the person did move. My second concern is the safety of this neighborhood. There are many families that live in the center of town, along with senior housing a couple of blocks away. And with all of the activity that goes on in this neighborhood, it just seems as though having a mental health and rehabilitation in the center of town will just contribute to much unnecessary activity. My other question, will this be a methadone clinic site? How long will these people be staying at High Point? I realize that each individual is different, but will their stay be mandatory, or will they be able to just walk out of the facility? Will these individuals, excuse me, will these individuals have to attend court appearance when they are at High Point? And if so, how will they be transported? How will they be discharged under supervision, or will they be able to just walk out? Is this going to be a lockdown facility? Will security be on duty 12 hours a day or 24 hours a day? What happens to the value of the neighbor's property? I am sure that it will decrease in value, which will not make many of the homeowners in this area very happy. Some of these questions, I am sure, have already been addressed. But I did miss the first meeting, so I apologize for the repetitive mess. In closing, I just hope that the board will consider all the cons in this situation. I am sure don't see any pros in this situation. Thank you for your time. Signed by Linda Trotterman.
Thank you, Norman. Okay, so.
Good evening. I'm Linda Trotterman. Hi, I'm here.
I'm going to do one of your behalf, okay? Oh, you did well, didn't you?
Yeah, I did. I did good. I just have, I misquoted in the letter because I thought it was going to be a drug rehab, and I was corrected by the article in the paper. As you know, I'm opposed to this. I've lived in Middleborough for 42 years, coming from Lakeville, right around the corner. I just, the location is just wrong. I worked for the Department of Correction for 15 and a half years, saw that side of drug and rehab, and kind of know a little bit of what goes on. I think I addressed all my questions, most of my questions in the letter. And I, parking is a big, I know you didn't want to talk about it, and I don't know when you're going to address it, but parking is a big issue. So I just wanted to let you know that I was here. Norman, you did a good job.
It always does, doesn't it?
Hi, my name's Sandy Anderson. I live on Oak Street. And my question is, there's a lot of scuttlebutt going on on Facebook about what this facility is, and it's not going to be. In my understanding, it was going to be a locked facility, 30-day term of stay. But now there's rumors out there that it's only seven days, and they can leave in 24 hours if they want to. Is that, is that true?
So you made it onto Facebook. Congratulations.
Thanks.
That's big. That's happened.
Yeah, that's Facebook. Yeah. To answer your question, the length of stay in a psychiatric hospital really ends up being about six or seven days. So it was never proposed to be a 30-day length of stay because that's not the reality of mental health treatment today, that most folks, when they have a psychiatric crisis, appear in an emergency room or assess it in an emergency room, are either admitted to a psychiatric unit inside that same general hospital or transferred to a freestanding facility. And it's pretty system-wide, and it ends up being six, seven days. Certainly, there's folks that are there longer, and there are some folks that are there shorter. You wouldn't normally have someone come and go in 24 hours because once someone does Section 12, and normally when they come into the facility, it may sound kind of strange, but they actually sign a voluntary commitment. But when they sign a voluntary commitment, what it says is that they agree that they need the services. And it's like 99% of the folks actually sign it. And if they feel a day later that they don't need the services, they actually can make a request to be discharged. And we have up to three days to review that request and assess, do we agree that they're ready to be discharged back to the community? And if we don't agree with that, they then have the right to be appointed a court attorney, and they go before a judge, and they make their case to a judge about being discharged against our will. I've never been in a case yet that I can remember that a judge has ever disagreed with us, and it's extremely rare that somebody actually goes through that process. The norm, folks, when they come in in crisis, stay until their treatment episode is over and they're assessed, and the feeling by the doc in charge of that client case and clinician and the nurse is that they're safe to be returned to community. One thing I always like to try to point out is that folks that, the day that folks come to me, they came from the community. And normally, because it's a crisis, they're in some type of crisis, and we provide a medical intervention, and when they're stabilized, they are returned to community. Now, obviously, there are cases when someone comes into you that they need long-term care. And if they need long-term care, we would then transport them to a state facility. Closest being to us right now is Taunton State Hospital, or the next, the largest interstate being, that would be Worcester State Hospital. To answer the other question around licensure, there will be no methadone treatment services as part of the scope of services. I do believe that you actually have a list of all the licenses that, I'm not sure if it's in today's report, but I know the consulting company did reach out and clarified every license at the facility would be requested. It's in there? Okay. So there, that is our commitment, that is the scope of licensure, and none of those licensures, it's very particular what services you can provide. Could I answer your question?
Just to clarify, you've got 75 beds?
72 beds, we're proposing.
72 beds, so you're, or probably other?
Exactly. That's exactly right. So you look at it, 72 beds, obviously, you don't run at 100% capacity. To keep the math simple, let's say there's 70 emissions a week. So that being 70 emissions a week, 70 discharges a week. And because there really isn't enough capacity for services, that, there's been a number of articles written around folks literally in the waiting room, waiting for a bed for days to actually even get into a facility. And that was one of the big reasons why, you know, we began to look at trying to create a larger facility because the need is just nowhere being met. So the reality is, when you have a bed, most days, the beds are full. So normally, most of the discharges happen in the morning, makes sense, you know, just like a general hospital. And then most of, most of the emissions then come in the afternoon. All the emissions come by ambulance, and normally, they're coming from an emergency department of a hospital, which is the norm. Okay. You're welcome.
Right. Before we move to continue this hearing until December 12th, if there's no more questions, I'd just like to defer to Attorney Witten, see if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. The only comment I'd like to make to the board prior to you continuing is, I would urge the applicant to produce for the board comments, responses to RKG's draft, or comments made this evening, as well as in the prior two hearings, in writing. The board is going to be asked to render a decision to approve, approve with conditions or deny this project, and it behooves the applicant to produce responses in writing. All the board has is a fairly cursory application. Everything else is anecdotal and completely hearsay in terms of the board being able to develop a written response. So I'm asking through the board to the applicant that from here on, we have written responses to the comments made either by the public or by RKG or comments made from the board, because we need that part of the record, and that's the record that the board can rely upon in terms of rendering its decision. Oral testimony for a public hearing of this magnitude really is not completely, it's not sufficient. It might be helpful to respond to a question made, but it's not sufficient for the board in terms of rendering its decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I'm assuming the applicant will do just that?
Yes. I mean, I've actually made a packet which addressed, I believe, the issues raised that we needed before, and we'll continue to, I would kind of reduce the packet for the next few minutes of issues.
Okay.
Eric, could I ask one other question?
Sure.
On the police calls to that address, I'm wondering how many police calls are made now in relationship to that vacant building? When people break into it, or hang around it, or whatever? I expect that there are some issues related to that vacant building even now. I'm not sure whether there have been fire calls related to that, but I think that's something we might consider.
Yeah, actually, that point was raised to Chief Gates at a prior meeting.
Okay, I don't remember his response.
Yeah, because there are calls already being made for vandalism and a number of different things there, but there was no exact number available at that time.
But I think that that should be considered because, I mean, if it turns out to be a break-even kind of thing.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Pori. I live at 55 Oak Street. I was listening to what you were saying. Not too many calls, I don't think, I live directly across the street. Probably more calls come in for the parking issue, which I know you didn't want to talk about, but that is a humongous issue. They park in my driveway, they park in front. Prior to me living there, my in-laws had a no-parking sign put in front of the house because I have a handicapped brother-in-law that still lives with me. Because when the hospital was open, people used to park in front of it. They still do it with the no-parking. I do call the police, they're probably sick of hearing me. Probably two out of the 10 times I call, maybe they show. Because I'm sure they know CCD, they come in, they're leaving, it's an easy thing. But as far as vandalism, I've seen people on the roof over there. I've called, nobody shows. That's usually in the summertime. The back parking lot? The back parking lot, people are racing their tires, dealing drugs, I watch it from my living room window, call the police, usually don't see them. So, I don't know if they're just tired of hearing it, but it's an issue over there as it is now with everything that goes on, so I am totally against it because I only feel like it's gonna be more of an issue.
Uh, excuse me, ma'am?
Yes.
How many, how often in a week do you call the police?
Well, not, not often anymore because it's kinda a waste of time. I'd probably say, the food pantry's great. They organize, they use the parking lot out back. CCD, they park on both sides, you can't even get out of the driveway. I've probably called in a month, maybe twice, but I don't anymore because they don't come. One officer did come when they parked in front of the house with the no-parking sign, and he did ask them to move, and they did. But a lot of times, I, the reason I don't think the police show, not because they don't want to, is it moves quickly. But the time that it moves quickly, they're, you know, they block you in, you know, they park, you can't walk on the sidewalk. Um, it's just, it's, it's a lot of traffic all the time, and I've addressed it with the church, but it gets nowhere. So, I just feel that if, when the hospital was open, we had to have the no-parking sign put there because the handicap bus could not get in front of the house. I only see that being an issue again. My in-laws are no longer with us, but my handicapped brother-in-law is with me now. So, it's just, it's just a big concern 'cause there's always something going on around there. And I just feel like the more activity, the more of the issue it's gonna be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Basically, just one other thing, uh, just for the record, um, I appreciate the interest in the community by High Point. Nobody said anything tonight derogatory, and I mentioned at the last meeting that I heard what a well-run organization it is. So, I applaud them for the type of thing. I think the questions that it had been tonight is, is this the right location? Selectman McKinnon talked about, uh, tax revenue. If they invest ten million dollars into the building, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what the assessed value is. If that was assessed at three to four million for purposes of taxation, it would only be fifty thousand dollars to the town. And so, when you weigh out what the services impact might be, fifty thousand dollars isn't a fully burdened cost of a policeman, isn't half the expense. So, um, you know, if, if High Point said, well, I'll pay you real estate tax, it's still a, a potentially negative impact to the town. Thank you.
Okay, so what we'll need is a motion to continue to, uh, December twelfth.
December? I'll second that.
Motion made in seconded? Uh, let's see, who's on this? Can I have my paper back? I know Dorothy, you're on it, right?
Yep. And I believe I'm on it.
Okay, so Dorothy?
In favor.
Liz?
Yes.
Darren?
In favor.
Norman?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. Motion carries to continue the hearing until December twelfth. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn at nine.
Do I have a second? Darren, great. All in favor?
Yo.
All right. Adjourn.
Adjourn.
That's like an atomic clock, isn't it? That's like dead-on.
I was gonna ask you. We actually, the reception was today.